Start with the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. The republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Sessor, do we have any exonerations?
I do.
All right, let's see what you got.
I'm good.
Bring them on.
I'm going to motion to approve these exonerations Eddie presented to us today.
I'll say. All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you have something on me?
Yes, right there. And if there's ever a refund, you sign two of them. Make a copy of that. Always. Thank you.
Okay, payroll. I understand we have the one addition of $230.29. To vouchers and, oh, sorry, payroll, let's start with payroll.
Make a motion to approve payroll for March 15th. A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the addition I mentioned to vouchers and invoices, was there anything else that was?
Other than that $230.
Forty-nine. There's, is there anything else?
I didn't notice anything. Motion to approve.
Other than the general things on there.
Sweet. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, I don't have prior meeting minutes, so I have to move past that one. State settlements? It's always something, whether it's this, when I was over there. All right, yeah. Virginia Anna Berry, Mary Louise Corley, Carl Chris Senior. Helen Lila Greenwood, Linda Carol Hammack, Lawrence Henry Hicks Junior, Kathy B. Lincoln Hoker. Hilda Louise Carr Perry, Anna Josephine Ryder. And that is it, so I move that we approve the settlement list.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So, I will say. We can start them.
Okay.
Right here as soon as Michael, Suzie come back. So the first one is that beautification.
Let's skip that to a public hearing.
Okay.
Because I think that's when the meeting is going.
And then there's a job description on there. It's always talked about, it's very vague. Thank you.
Is it ready?
Yeah, was I.
Yeah, I think it's under here. She gave me a different stack that I would have with you.
Because that's, it's going to change.
Yeah. I would say maybe just add something under the job summary about the, about assisting us. What about you guys?
I'm good.
All right, we approve administrative assistant job description.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Logo?
That's something you had brought up at one point. A new, want a new digital handling logo.
Well, I wanted us to have, not just digital, I wanted us to have something that looks like it was made in this century, yeah.
Yeah. And you had said we needed to have a special weather, that's an RFP or.
Okay, so that's, okay, so I think we probably do put out an RFP to design our website and logo. Because GST can host it, but we just need to get the design done, we can even start putting a new designed website up. What do you think?
I think they're already designing the website.
So listen to this.
Yeah, the website itself.
They're designing our website now.
Yeah.
They are.
Some more information.
We just need to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they are.
They've gotten to us. And then. Shouldn't that go together, I mean, is the logo going to be part of the design?
That's not, I don't think that that's necessarily the kind of thing they do.
No, that, I'd like a professional to do it.
Yeah.
That's what I, last time I had one.
Whatever we give them, they will put on there. But they're just setting up the whole website.
Well, I say we put out an RFP and then and then we can call people we know, like the person who did my designs for my campaign did a good job, he was out at Carlsburg or somewhere, I can't remember, but just let those people know it's out there in case they're interested in bidding on it. You know, if you guys know people too.
Yeah, that, Sign Art and Beckley done a real good job. They really, I was back and forth for six months with them. And they'd send it to me and then I would send it to the family and then I'd send it back from the changes and they would really properly back and forth.
Well, if you're that picky, I don't want you.
I was at with the logo.
We'll have six months.
Last time I did the logo personally and I really messed up on it, so I wanted professionals to do it.
Yeah.
And they took much time.
All right, well, yeah, I think we should reach out to people like that, have them respond, so can you guys get something written up for us and I think we can just approve it in concept here and then approve the specifics in an email, don't you think?
And then once we get a nice design made, we can use that design on shirts. Yeah, right Tom?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Y'all wanting like matching shirts?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm not getting one that matches you two. I want anybody to know we're together.
Long as the logo is the same.
I'm just kidding. All right, so all those in favor of putting, I move that we put out an RFP to get a logo or designed for our county that we'll use on business cards and websites and any kind of, and our letterhead and all that stuff.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, why don't PSD bypass?
This is where that, they had asked for that funding and we're not doing anything with that funding yet and they want to basically send that letter saying that we may look at it later, but it's not a year in the D E P. And I think it's in the back of your, it is.
If you notice, it's going to the D E P.
Yeah, this is higher than what, is in your email size, is it a different project?
I thought it was 384,000, oh.
Well, that's what, it was the last time.
It says 503,000.
Talk about a reduction.
Yeah.
And whenever I talked to Wisman last night, he said it was 384,000.
So what are we doing, what is this for?
He just wants, he wanted me to send a letter saying that you may consider it later and I said, I'm not sending that. The commission would have to send it and you would have to vote as to whether or not you want to send this letter saying we may review it later and may or may not award. I mean, I don't know.
You know, I.
I just need yes or no. I don't understand, but. You saying you may or may not, I don't see how that would help you because you may not.
I have an issue with that 503, what's it going to be used for?
I don't know, because that's not what they asked for.
Yeah, they asked for 384.
I'm not inclined to do this. Weeks.
I mean, regardless, he would have, if you say no, he's going to have to pay the money anyway.
Well, they need to come in here and pitch this, I mean, I don't even.
That's a different part of life.
Yeah.
And that is a different.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm going to move that we do not approve this and if he wants to come back and talk us through why they need it and why we should do it and.
And the change.
Mm-hmm, and the change, significant change in dollar amount, then we can do that, but I move that we disapprove this letter.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. I would prefer having the board in and not this person.
Yeah, because that person was.
Yeah, yes, I agree, John, so let's, let's Larry Bledsoe is in charge of them. Who, no, David.
David is the engineer.
Yeah, he's the engineer, but Larry is the. Larry and Wisman. But I just. Yeah.
Did you take your left to the bank? Yes, that's my second. Yes.
Mm-hmm. And she knows us so well.
Those were to add to your packet.
Okay, so. Community Corrections Grant application?
Here's one from today. That one is, you just need to.
We've already voted and everything?
You have to vote today.
Yeah.
Just to prove that they apply for the grant that they do every year?
Yes.
Yeah.
And she asked for it. She asked them.
Good.
It looks really good.
I think she's done a great job.
All her numbers match, everything.
Yeah.
Hey, listen. You have no idea what we go through.
I'll show you what she sent me and I'll ask her, I told her that must be the new map because I can't remember.
And I'm sure that's a comparison to.
Yes.
And knowing that she's doing much better.
She is.
Yeah, I'm laughing.
I've seen the nervous point for the decisions taken out in terms of giving us the information.
She's done, we've been there two months, wait till she's been there longer.
Last one I pulled her.
Yeah. And I just sent. Okay, so I move we approve the grant, or Community Corrections Grant Program application for next year and we'll start with that and then there's an MOU, right?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And MOU, the application, oh, sweet. Move to the MOU.
For community corrections?
Mm-hmm.
That's all it's been taking care of.
We didn't have to approve MOU then, because it's on here. I did, okay. So, oh, that's right, that's right, I told you to do that. So because it had to be turned in, we were late and it had to be turned in for the meeting, so this is not pro.
Yeah.
But anyway, I move that we let me, that we approved that, I already stamped the MOU because the application was going to be late if we didn't. I know Ruth called all of us about it, but.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and the request from Becky Sullivan for the Bridge Day Commission to add a regional tourism advisory role. This is the concern I addressed when Bridge Day was canceled, that we had other counties that had stakes in Bridge Day that didn't weren't, you know, taken into account when those decisions were being made. And we had some discussions in the Rules and Regulations Subcommittee when we were reviewing the bylaws and what we came up with was we wanted to add Lisa Strater, not necessarily Lisa, but somebody from active Southern West Virginia because she represents, you know, our county, Raleigh Nicholas, the surrounding counties that were indirectly affected by, or are directly affected by Bridge Day and we thought it'd be helpful if there were decisions like that or otherwise afoot that we could have someone advise us on the implications.
Was the position out for everyone to see and able to apply for it?
No, it has not been out. Has not been put out, I mean, it can be, but the other thing that we, I was going to say, the other thing that we were trying to accomplish with this too, is to have someone who's not one of the six permanent members be the chairperson, so if there's a tie, that person could break the tie. And we anticipated that this person would be that chairperson and do a lot of the coordination for Bridge Day. So it, in my opinion, at least for our first round, I mean, the Southern West Virginia C V B is probably the best.
Because it's, yeah.
Organization to do that, because it covers all of our counties. It was a tourism specific issue and Lisa Strater is the head of that C V B and has applied for the job. So I'd like to make an exception to that this time and.
And I agree with that, I was thinking the same thing before I even seen who it was.
Gloria.
To be on the Southwest, didn't it, somebody, at least on the Southwest Virginia Vision Bureau Board from the.
Okay, so first, I move that we approve the request to create the Regional Tourism Advisory Role Position on the Bridge Day Commission.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then second, I move that we appoint Lisa Strater to occupy that position for a two-year term.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, so let's, let's go ahead and move on to the regular agenda, since we're a little bit behind there. And discuss the New Roots Farm Transfer. Come on up. I didn't have my glasses on and your glasses were confusing me, I was like, is that Suzie?
Yeah, I'm like.
Well, do we have? Do we have, I know we had documents. Did anybody have concerns about those documents? That are, in terms submitted to us?
Mr. Taylor, you want to add anything on this or?
Well, all this, the only thing I'll say is, and Suzie's here. It's my understanding that the commission is intending to stop kind of its role in operating the farm. And that's been kind of the signal for a while and working with Suzie and the new entity that has been formed that is intending on taking over the operations of the farm, that if a March 31st cease operation date is approved by the commission, that would be acceptable to the new Roots Community Farm non-profit. And obviously, in conjunction with that, from just kind of a legal perspective, you know, clarifying what it means to cease operations means that if there won't be any financial support from the county, subject to the nonprofits who want to come to the commission and seek support, obviously entitled to do that, but it wouldn't be any ongoing operating expenses that employees that were working at the farm, that their employment would be severed. Most of those, if not all of them, were grant funded anyway and it's the intent that the grants could go with the farm and will have to facilitate over the next month or so with Suzie transferring the grant stuff. And she's already been in contact with some or all of the grant providers, letting them know what the intent and plan is and how do we transfer them over. She understands what's, what has to happen with that and we're going to work together and get those processed over, but because of that, because the commission will no longer be operating the farm through financial, continued financial assistance and employment, the employees that are assigned to the farm with their, their employment would be separated with the county. Also, we had an issue with property and personal property and what to do with that. Well, I've looked through all the records that Suzie provided and everything that is at the farm now is either in the ground and then therefore becomes a part of the land, has been structural improvement or building of structures, including concrete paths and things of that nature. There was only one item that I located in the last, well, two items, let me factor, two items that have been located through the records over the last however many years that would have a value without, that were purchased for a value of over a thousand dollars. One is a computer that is over three years old, so it no longer has a market value of over a thousand dollars. And there's a Freightliner van, I think is what it is. What is that? Refrigerator van, now that's over a thousand dollars because of West Virginia code. That item would have to be returned to the county if you not go with the farm subject to however the county wishes to operate or wishes to do with that refrigeration van would be up to the county, but it remains county property. All other property valued at under a thousand dollars can be disposed of without auction and without selling for market value, the state code provides that. Anything under a thousand dollars can be disposed of by the county commission as it sees fit. It's my understanding that it's the intent of the commission that to dispose of that property by leaving it at the farm. And obviously, it would be therefore able to be used by the nonprofit that's taking over the farm. So with that, I prepared a resolution that basically states everything that I've just said, which would make plain and clear the commission's intent with respect to the farm handle the issue regarding the employment and the disposal of the property that is under a thousand dollars while making clear that property, the one piece of property over a thousand dollars would be returned to the county.
I have a question.
Yes.
If, so if, for any reason, they have been unable to finish transferring all the grants and that sort of thing by April 1st, what are the implications?
Well, there would be no implications because the grant is, regards would relate to funding and spending money. And so, so they've stopped spending money on the grants right now to get to the transition period. So the only implication would be that there may be requirements that the commission would have to sign a letter or other documents from the grant for indicating that we've ceased operations and either to dismiss the grant or transfer it. That would be the only hanging issue out there and that's just paperwork issue. It would not have an, it would not negatively impact the grants. And hopefully, all of those issues will be resolved prior to, or at least the ball, the ball will be put into motion to resolve this issue. She's already talked to one of the grants, they would require a letter on the county commission letterhead regarding certain things, Suzie's going to prepare a draft of that letter, send it to me to review. I'm going to look at it, look at the, make sure it's good, send it to the commission with my recommendation for signature and that should be done before April 1st. And so, and any other issues that may come along. I can remain as a point person that Suzie can contact and filter through, help facilitate any other transitionary issues.
Okay, do you have any concerns?
Yeah, and I think you're talking about the subaward agreements, I think you're, and I communicated with Gio, we have to hold up on the payment payment system, I talked to him today, maybe. They've approved the banking request and so another four business days before they update that in the system. And that's our last large reimbursement through the LFPP grant and its closeout date is March 31st. So we had found an extension for one more quarter, or two quarters on that grant. The closeout date is March 31st and so we have that reimbursement and then another three thousand dollars in the grant. And I fully intend to have those reimbursements filed, the county has received them before that date and we're already working on the final report because it's a structured form that we have to fill out, so that's in process, so we're submitting this request, hopefully as soon as they, we've already had it approved by the grant agency that they've switched the reimbursement process over to some portal system. Yeah, that's just taking a little extra time.
So are there going to be any hiccups in transferring those grants before the 501(c) status is completed?
No, because the LFPP is, that's going to get closed out here on the 31st and then the two subaward agreements, as long as the the entity that's received those grants, they are the eligible applicant and so the subawardees don't have to have that same status. And so, I already worked through that with April and they have other subawardees, right, that are of yeah, different statuses and so they can pass through money almost like a physical sponsor. So as long as the lead applicant has their status, there's no issue with the subawardee.
Who is April?
Oh, sorry, the director of Spelling Month.
Okay.
And that's the two, those are the two grants that we would transfer and so we have what is like an MOU or the subaward agreement that was signed by the commission and it had a start date and a budget associated with it and for those two, we've stopped spending money at the end of December and so I know exactly how much the has gone through the commission's account, so she requested that we just do one letterhead, explain that we're going through the transition, indicate that this is the amount of money that was purchased out of the allocated budget, so that allows her to update what that MOU says where it's like, okay, the original start date, end date and budget was this and now it's going to be, start date's the same, budget's different because we've only spent down so much before we transfer it and then we make the end date on the 31st of March. And that would be everything she needs to be able to terminate that subaward agreement and then we would start over with the roots. And we would be taking what is the remainder of that initial budget and that would be then allocated in the new subaward agreement.
Closing out commission involvement, transferring it over, but it's just a matter of, for their, for their purposes, they look at it as what's the commission's involvement, okay, now that they're done, we need to settle up the account from the commission's involvement, subtract that money from the total amount and then we transfer it to a new entity and the reduced amount becomes the new total amount. So it should be, it should, for all intents and purposes, be a quote-unquote need break. And, but there, there obviously may be some paperwork issues related to some of these things that may bleed over into the next few weeks, but that wouldn't affect any of the financial obligations by the commission or any employment issues that would be related there too, so.
All right, you guys have any questions? John, do you have any questions?
No.
All right, I move that we approve the resolution as proposed by our council to transfer all operations of the farm to the farm.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and let's go ahead and take up the matter of the refrigerated truck.
Well, that may I would need to provide, I think, some legal advice to the commission with respect to that issue. So that may be appropriate for a very quick.
Just as an update, because there was a split on that where the commission provided what was essentially matched on that and some of the money came out of the LFPP budget, so I can send you that, what that letter of disposal is on there then, because I think that's part of it was purchased with grant funds, so I can send that to you and you guys can figure out what makes sense.
Can you get ahold of it now, Ash?
Yeah, I can go upstairs.
Okay. Okay.
I think we.
Will you do that for?
Email it down.
Okay. Why don't you do that and we don't have our, let's take a quick break and then we can reconvene in executive session. Okay, yeah.
It'll be very, it'll be very.
Okay. Break and then executive session.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Good for two days and then it's. And on this side. The dog won't stop or keep sticking in my ear. So I just took it off.
Do they not have, like, you should ask them if they have a different kind of hand they can put on it or something.
Yeah, that's what we're going to try to do next week. Yeah, that's what we're going to try to do next week when I come in. They, she had ordered some special things.
Do we have a printed copy of that resolution to sign?
This one?
Yeah, she didn't give it to us. Yeah.
Yeah, I know. Okay.
There's two of them.
I've been meaning to buy you some peanut butter crackers to bring in here.
No, I think it's cheese.
I said I want peanut butter ones. Thank you. Okay, we need to talk to Michael too about yeah, about the bid on the property.
So do we know anything about that?
Well, Tom does, so he's my friend.
Oh, okay. Good, good. Perhaps we could take our budget. Maybe we could take our budget, Tom, since we don't have all the information.
Oh, who, what are we, who was supposed to be on here that we missed? All right.
Welcome.
Resoning, welcome, everybody.
Is that Michael phone on?
Amy said what?
Well, you go over this with us.
Yeah, so what I'll do normally is I'll read you the case number. I will read you what their request is. And basically, I'm just going to read you the motion. You guys, I did send you ahead. And then you guys, if you want to ask the applicants any questions, and then you guys will make your decision. So so the first case we have is rezoning case Z-530-22-1. It's requested John Taylor and Joseph Cranford, their owner, for a change in land classification from rural residential, which is RR District to B3, which is business tourism. They own two parcels, which is point one seven acres and point two five acres, which Amy has it on the map for you, which is right near Cantrell's Rafting, if you know where that's at. So they made their presentation to the planning commission. Mr. Willis motioned to accept the rezoning from RR to B3 based upon commercial approval of the health department and Carl Harris seconded. I did reach out to Amanda Skaggs, who is our sanitarian, because there were some questions about septic. This is Amanda's email. I just got it a few minutes ago. So I'm sorry, you don't have a copy of it. Just spoke to Mr. Taylor and Johnny Critchley, who is the septic installer. They are going to replace the current septic system with a class 11 system because of the space. They'll be putting in an Elgin system that will be sized for the two capooses and the two bedroom house. So that was one of the issues the planning commission did have is it only had one septic. So Amanda is happy with the new Elgin system. So I believe Mr. Taylor is on Zoom. So if you guys have any questions for him.
Good morning.
Good morning. Do you guys have any questions? I, I didn't have any questions. We had some pretty thorough feedback from the planning commission meeting. So I move that we approve that rezoning request. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Mr. Taylor. Okay, so moving on to the second case, it is case number Z-531-22-1 is a request of James and Pollyanna Barton. They are the owners requesting a change in land classification to an RR, which is rural residential district, to a B3, which is business tourism, which is on property legally described as surface 21.86 acres Mill Creek. They are requesting B3 zoning for a glamping campground. Mr. Willis from our planning commission made a motion to decline the request due to not having a plan for commercial entrance and not a firm business plan. It was seconded by Mr. Josh Davis as an unanimous decision. Mr. and Mrs. Barton are both here. So if you guys have any questions for them or any additional questions.
Does anybody want to speak with regard to this one? I understand that the recommendation of planning commission is to decline the application. What's your name, sir?
James Oliver.
Yeah, you can pick it up.
They are putting a power line. I know you guys are aware, the substation they're putting in. And there's two towers right in my back corner. That's, that's so far, the subject's changed. It's going to be right there where it says 1.254. Or that's right there at that corner, there's 200-foot power tires. It's going right there, 100-foot towers. That's going right through the creek line and around over, crossing over to Victor. They bought, the power company bought Vic, a place in Victor for the substation. But that subject's changed, but he says pretty stunned. I don't know. I got the number, but call the guy that's over top of all of this. As far as right now, that's what the plan is. And it's in my backyard, too. That's another kind of thing that's, you know.
What does that have to do with this, this rezoning request?
That was going through there. I didn't, I wasn't, you know.
Okay.
That's all. I'm just saying that.
So I'll note that we received a petition against the glamping campground that's signed by 35 residents in the Chestnutburg Road area. And they are asking that it be denied as well. They're concerned about increased traffic, drugs, vagrancy, unwanted noise and a decrease to their property value. Okay, so we also had a comprehensive briefing on what the planning commission's recommendations were, which was to deny this application. And, and I agree. So I move that we deny this application for rezoning.
That's right.
All those in favor? Hey, Woolworth Stone Development Company.
The applicants were really did want to say something.
Okay. Well, yeah, I'd ask if they had anything to say.
I think they might not have known if they were. Yes, I did bring our business, our business plan. And then I also brought our our application and our grant from the DOH that they have approved a commercial entrance in Park, parking lot.
I think what will have, have to happen now is you'd have to take it back before the planning commissions.
The board of zoning appeals, if they appeal, they, they're basically appealing your guy's decision if they still wants to do it. They would have to make a request within 30 days to go and run the board of zoning appeals. And then they would review it and either, obviously, your guys hold it. And if they still don't like it, then it would go to the circuit. If you guys still want to do the mod.
The circuit court?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so they would go to border zoning, they would make a recommendation to us.
On it. And basically what they're doing is just like, they're making sure that all procedures are proper. They're not overturning the rule and they're just making sure that all the procedures are proper.
If they wanted a reconsideration, though, based upon this DOH information.
They have to wait here under our.
But if they go to zoning appeals.
The board of zoning appeals could.
They could appeal the decision now? Okay, and then what would happen if they succeed at that level?
Then it would basically be overturned and they would be allowed to have the U3.
Without coming through here. Okay. All right, well, it sounds like that's your option is to go before the board of zoning appeals with that new information.
You have to make requests within 30 days.
And those are public hearings as well. So those who have input to those hearings should attend.
Okay, so the next case is Z. I'll get one, one second. Sorry. Got it on me. There you go. Okay, it's Z-532-22-1. It is a request of Woolworth Stone Development Company. They are requesting a change in land classification from rural residential, planned residential development that was done in 2004 to planned unit development on property legally described as 164.28 acres, New Haven District. Just so you do know, for the record, Ashton Critchley is on our planning commission, but she did recuse herself prior to voting. And she is here. This property, just as a side note, was already zoned for residential area, but she's going to have a more of a mixed use. So she's here if you guys have any questions. The planning commission did make a recommendation to rezonate. Mr. Willis made the recommendation and Carl Harris seconded.
Ashton, could you come up and explain to my colleagues the issue you're having with those well heads on your property and kind of in general what the plan is?
Yes, so the property currently has two gas wells located. One is at the entrance, another one is located on the first point along the gas well road. Both of those wells were declared abandoned in 2017. I've been working to try to contact the gas company who does have leases on those wells because they are supposed to be capped and pulled on the property. Obviously, having those at crucial areas in the property kind of pushes back being able to develop it because I don't want to start building and then have to have it all turned out to get those logs and everything. We've been trying for about three months. My legal firm, which is Bowles, Bowles Rice, has been working to do that. But we have not been successful in actually being able to get ahold of the gas company, which is R and R located off Buchanan.
What gas company is it?
R and R.
And I don't know if it's the same one, but I was telling Ashton when I spoke with her about this yesterday that there, another member of our community had asked me for a referral or counsel because there is a gas company in Buchanan that's not paying, I guess royalties or something like that, but it should be paying. I don't know if it's the same company or not, but it, I thought that was curious.
Does R and R, have you looked at, does R and R have any other gas wells in Big County?
My understanding is they're the ones that actually own the system that is in this area. So I think there's something like 84 other gas wells within this area. I don't know how many are, I don't know how many of those are still producing, how many are abandoned. I just know that the ones from our property were declared abandoned in 2017. But it's part of a larger network that's located in that area.
See, I thought Columbia and all of the. I mean, I'm just, I don't know.
These were bought, I want to say like in 2000, mid, the mid, like 2015, 2016. R and R bought out the leases from Everest. Everest owned is what's on the gas takes out there now. They were bought out by R and R. I don't know if R and R has been bought out at some other point past that. I mean, it's, it's a change. So I do know Bowles Rice had went to the DEP to confirm these gas wells and they are listed on the DEP site as being, having to be declared inactive since 2017. So that's where it's at right now.
Does it have gas flow?
No, it's like, it's, it's minimal to the point that it's not, it doesn't produce enough to actually register.
One thing, you know, point of interest, as we've talked about these sewer upgrade projects and things, you know, the upgrade to Anstead and the expansion through Chestnutburg Road, that would tend to serve this entire project as well. So as we, you know, move forward with our development, as we include, you know, AOTG and the visitor center and our pitch, we also have this development that it would benefit. And, and then of course, the, the businesses that's expressed interest are about 60. 19, so.
One thing I would watch too is if they have gas lines coming from multiple directions, how far under the ground there are in case someone wants to dig a basement. That's going to be a a big boom, so.
Right. Well, that's why we wanted to get these wells capped and the lines pulled off of the property altogether so that we didn't have that issue because I was made aware about four years ago, one of the lines actually did bust on this portion of property. And that's how it kind of came about that. You know, they come up with the assholes weren't really owned by anybody necessarily. So that's, that's what the next step of this is to get, get those out of there.
Yeah, you don't want that extra.
No, no.
Extra thought. This did pass. I'll make a yeah. Motion to approve. Yeah, thank you.
All right, a second. All those in favor? Thank you, Ashton.
Good luck on that. I hope you get those lines out. If you don't, keep the commissioner in, in mind and let her know what's going on. And perhaps one of us can help you.
I've asked her to reconnect with NRG RDA about some of the other things she told me about that she's planning to do. And she's going to do that. We may, I, I suggested, and I may want to see if she can just come to our 3 o'clock next week when they're, they'll be here.
That'll be good.
So if you're available, Ashton, 3 o'clock here. Okay, we'll be in the county administrator's office. I may have to move in here then. What's, what's the budget discussion? Are we having one today?
Not.
Okay, well, let's just go to that, move it. I don't have all the information we needed on the last item on Exhibit A. So I move that we postpone that until meeting on 6th, is it 16? Yeah, it is. So 16?
Eighteenth. Oh, nine, seven, 16, you're right.
That was, sorry.
I'll second.
All those in favor? No, it wasn't beautification committee. It was the last, the last item on Exhibit A. We have a one man ban. Okay, so the, on the farm property, we have some outstanding questions. So beautification committee, Angela. I see the press has zero interest in our need for community support. Okay, good. Thank you for attending. I know Steve Keenan couldn't come and contacted me and we're having lunch tomorrow to this. I asked Amy also, do you written, just a written press release too?
Yeah.
All right, hit us, Angela.
So you guys should have a hope because I don't remember it and I bring it with me. Kind of what I think of a good flow of, thanks ma'am. Of maybe, we do have a delegated ordinance, as you guys know, so we don't have to create one. It's just a matter of getting revamped up and getting our committee going and hitting the road and finding any and every house we can. So kind of my thought is to, if you guys could work on getting all of our board members enacted and getting community volunteers, which we do need two of them. They're appointed by you guys, so anybody in any stretch of the county. Everybody else's position is kind of state mandated.
So we don't have the community volunteers?
Not that I know of. I don't know that we've had any applicants. So we do not have anybody at this point in time on that. So we do have your code official or any other qualified county employee. So Alan Ballard is normally services that job. You do have a, since we do have a county litter control officer, he would sit on the board. You do have, you would need a county fire chief. I was going to attend the fire association meeting, but I I was going to attend the fire association meeting, but I did have a schedule conflict that I do apologize, but I have sent a very nice email to every single one of the fire chiefs, as well as Mark Bass at Association, as well as Joe Chris, with a copy of the appointment application. So hopefully somebody will respond. And if not, we'll pick up the phone maybe next week. We have a couple people that may, you know, nobody works, so it's one hour a week, because I'll, one hour a month that building. And then other than that, once we get all those members, you guys can appoint them, and then we can start sending out violation letters. That would be the very first thing we need to do.
So the recap of who we need, two community volunteers and one county fire chief?
Yes, because obviously, I mean, Alan Ballard, he does know that he would be on one. Tommy Harris is our current litter control officer. He's, you know, he's fine. He's ready to get going again. So basically, that would be it. We could get two members of the community. They don't have to be in any section of the county. It just basically state codes says two at-large community members, so. You guys have anybody or?
Okay.
Get involved.
So what if we didn't have an urban renewal authority? Because I think that we, you know, we've anticipated, at least this urban renewal authority was set up more as an economic development authority, and its members are, after Wolf Creek Park is sold, are really not interested in the dilapidated housing business.
So after, as far as our committee, what we do is we do more of the government stuff. We find the houses, we notify the property owners that they're in violation of the ordinance. If they don't tear the house down, then it's up to you guys to either tell them they have so many days to tear it down, or if they don't, the county comes in, and then, of course, it does go through Anthony's office, so he has to be happy and on board with this because it does require a lot of paperwork on his end. After that, once you guys say it needs to come down, and Anthony may want, I believe you can put a, is it Liz pending? I always get that. On the property, letting someone know that some action will be taken. Yeah, and so normally that's what we've done. So even if the county currently doesn't have the funding, we can at least let the properties know this house is, you know, in bad shape, it needs to come down. As far as after that, whatever plan it is to redevelop the property, whether it's to reinforce the sale of the lane, if you guys do spend the money to tear it down, or if it is to get the property owner to donate the property, I know that we've talked about that in the past, that's where I think you're going to need some type of redevelopment agency. So, I mean, I don't think it has to be a U R A from your guys' understanding. It can be a land reuse, it can be a redevelopment team, just some type of team that knows what they're doing to get a piece of property viable again. And it may be just selling it to the neighbors so the neighbors can have a garage or, you know, but something. But it doesn't have to be a U R A as far as your guys, you know, knowledge. It can be any type of redevelopment committee.
The drawback to the ordinance is it has a mechanism in place for the county to problem is by the time I mean, there's, there's two issues. It basically allows us to get a lien against property, which doesn't put money in our pockets. And then the other issue is that we have to have the money for the ordinance to function properly. First, give the property the option of cleaning up the property at their time and expense. If that doesn't happen, the county will take steps to clean up the property. So we have to have, we have to have money available to pay someone to go in and clean the property up. Then we get a lien, then we can get a lien against the property, but doesn't, like I said, doesn't necessarily put money in the county's pocket. We either have to take steps to enforce the lien or get the landowner voluntarily satisfied by paying us back.
Can we, do we still have the option to send them a letter with a copy of the deed and say, hey?
Oh, I mean, I think we ought to. We can basically send them a letter that says, hey, you got a problem. Either you deal with it or we're going to deal with it. By the way, one option that you have at your disposal, if you don't want to pull this, you can sign the property over to the county. And in that instance, the problem becomes the county's problem. We can clean the property up, and then we can turn around and sell it to recoup our money. But the other thing to keep in mind is, is it's conceivable, a lot of these properties are not going to have enough value to allow us to fully recoup the cost of demolition and disposal. Particularly if there's asbestos involved.
Is there, is the ordinance, does it need any revisions?
I don't think so. Like Angela said, the problem is it's still in the agencies on red commitment.
Yeah.
That, to me, is the first step. Once that, once that happens.
Yeah, I mean, we can, and even though we don't have the money right now, we've had success of just sending the property owners a letter saying, hey, you can't have, and that, some of those houses do come down before, I mean, we've had over a hundred fifty people that got a letter saying they were in violation that did take the house down themselves. So, I mean, once we get that committee, we can at least hit the road, send letters out to people saying you need to clear it up. And then if funding becomes available or things like that, then we can do, of course, that more.
Well, we think we might be able to get funding. I think once a committee stands up, if you could, you know, at least give us lists of the dilapidated homes along like the historic Route sixty and the roads like six twelve, the ones that tourists are going to come in, Canard, Thurman.
And I mean, what we could do, and I know I mentioned this. Once we get an active committee and get back to where we were several years ago, we can do a, not really a point system, but a par, you know, this property does have water and sewer, because that is a big thing if we are going to redevelop. Whether we take the property and they donate it and we get another agency, even if it's an outside agency to redevelop it, it's a lot better if we spend the money, some property that has water, sewer, any type of infrastructure.
Right.
So I mean, we do have to prioritize them a little bit, but we can give you a list of, these are houses on Route sixty, these are houses wherever you guys, we can do maps and things like that, so you guys have an idea.
Okay, because I think I met with Senator Capito's office and Mr. Gunter suggested to me that we might be able to get some funding at the federal level through an earmark to devote to things with that kind of nexus.
Right.
That, because they are focused on the park and park adjacent and routes between, you know, airport and here and that sort of thing, so.
If we could get funding.
Yeah, I think so, too. And, and, and they succeeded once. They set a precedent for another county, and they were, they were able to slip something in and and get the money, and they've been, they've been going along, and they didn't have the impetus we do. So, you know, I think they're really interested because they're, they're interested in creating a historic route for a lot of people. I told my colleagues the other day, we expected that thirty percent influx in tourists, but we thought they would largely be from Asia because there are a lot of Asian tourists that come to public parks or national parks, but they, they haven't been allowed to enter the country. So that, that influx has not come yet. So now, you know, we have them coming, and they're not all extreme sport people, like they, they're going to want to come and see historical things and other stuff. So, you know, we want to start rehabilitating our, you know, historical buildings and, and focus on the historic routes and things like that to try to, and try to bust them or get them, tour them into these communities where, you know, the communities can then thrive from, from that group. So that's, that's the reason that, you know, they, they've been focused on it is because they've talked to Dan Hill about helping with Glen Ferris Inn and and other things like that. So I'm, you know, I'm pretty excited about those things. But anyway, this is a really great start, and Amy was going to work on a written press release.
We're going to work on it with Angela.
Okay, and, yeah, and John is spearheading the effort on the commission's behalf. And he's been working on dilapidated housing for, well, the entire time, yeah, for years, but the entire time I've been on the commission, that's been one of his issues. Right, right, so. That's progress, isn't it?
It's symptomatic of what we see all over the county realistically.
Yeah. Well, we're hoping that some of these homes, if we acquire them, will be able to be rehabilitated and, and into, you know, first-time homebuyer homes, properties, because that's a, another problem here is that we have young people who want to stay here and live here, and nothing that is available in the rare time that it is, is affordable to them.
Reasonable, I think a reasonable estimate is for demolition and disposal.
Without asbestos.
Without asbestos.
Yes, correct.
And that's.
With asbestos, it's going to depend on whether it's siding shingles and how much. Asbestos baited on the property we had, and it costs four thousand dollars to remove the asbestos siding. That covered removal and disposal of it.
Okay. All righty.
And I think the first thing, like I said, we can, we can send letters out to property owners, and I do have these signs we put in the yard that did work really well several years ago, that basically is a big ugly orange and yellow sign that says, this is a bane of property. It belongs to so-and-so. Yeah, and I mean, it actually did, and the other state agencies have actually used that. I mean, if you talk to other dilapidated, they actually did use that. Because it is all public. It's not like it's something that's private. It is public. And I mean, we actually had several people that tore their houses down. So, I mean, those little things do work. I mean, the sign's eight dollars, so it's not like this. And we, we do have one, but we could add the, I mean, we have the one that basically says you can get fined every day, you know, it's everything in state ordinance, but we can very simply add, you know, if you're unable to continue to maintain this property, you can also, you know, donate to the county, and that's where, also, we had talked in the past about the land banking. If we're going to work into the first-time homebuyers, maybe we're writing an ordinance for land banking so that these tax properties that just residually go through those, we can have first right to.
Yeah, by putting them over into.
Well, it would be a landless, yeah.
No, actually, it's.
It'd be a land.
Okay, good.
But it does give the county the ability through the tax sale to acquire ownership of properties that are distressed, and then, of course, they
Okay, great. Angela, could you provide the commissioners of this?
First thing is, follow the statement. You have to have influence to make. If it's not a board, we kind of can't do a lot with them, so.
We, we had quite a bit of success in this area.
It looks a lot better, a lot better. All right, well, thank you. And at this point, we don't have, our next thing is public hearing at eleven. I'd like to move that we go back into executive session because we had something come up yesterday where we had a U R A met in a special meeting and had an offer on Wolf Creek Park. So our council for U R A happens to be here right now, and I'd like to ask them some questions. So executive session at ten thirty-six. Your turn at eleven. All right, so we're here for our eleven o'clock public hearing to establish the community voting location in Montgomery Community Center. Madam Holly?
This is part of the process for establishing, establishing a new location, since we hadn't moved the one in Montgomery from where it was currently because it's under construction. Having a public hearing, giving the public a chance to speak for or against is part of the process. If anybody has any objections, I think it moves, what, a street over and down a block or something?
Right, and did we decide we're going to do it for both the primary and the general to avoid confusion?
Once it is now established, we can continue, just agree to hold it there until such time as when we have to move it again, so.
Okay, well, I move that we establish that voting location in Montgomery Community Center due to the unavailability of the usual voting location for this primary and general election this year.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.